I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carry. Uh, request to appear before the console. I think Jerry Gilman is here.
Yeah, I'm here.
You don't show up anywhere else, so you might as well do it now.
So this year, presenting the rates for lawn care, there's not going to be any changes. So there'll be frees and all rates, including the cleaning as well, so.
Wow, that's the best he can do?
It's the best he can do. Pretty easy.
Thanks for me.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Henderson lawn care bid.
Sorry.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carry.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Police Chiefs Monthly.
January 2023 Henderson Police Report. Thirty-nine public contacts, eight public assists, one assist other agencies, two ICRs generated, two animal complaints. The backup squad is now up and running. Carl Martin started on January fourteenth. Jake Schneider's post license was approved and will start before the end of the month. I was backgrowing a third guy, but he's not going to make it. She stopped backgrowing him because of some issues, so. And there was something else I was going to say too.
I forgot what it was.
So Carl is the full-time, Jake is the part-time?
Carl started on the fourteenth.
Okay.
Seems to be working out well, so.
Good.
Seems to be learning and taking direction well, so. And he's going to help out. He's kind of a computer guru too, so. Because he made him build his own computer, so.
Does he live in Henderson? Does he live in the community?
No, he lives in Platteville.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and Jake lives in, uh, East Creve.
Okay.
I did notice that one of our problem properties had made some improvement.
Yeah, well, another one's going to be gone tomorrow too, so that one's going to be gone. And then another one I have to haul away, so. So that, uh, I'm going to be working on that one maybe tomorrow or Friday, one of the two.
Good.
But then I still got to have some citations, these will be issues, so.
Thank you, sir. SEH Project Updates Agreement Flood Mitigation Amendment.
Everybody, uh, I'm going to go through this document that left in your spaces here today, so. At the meeting last December, it requested me provide a memo on the street utility improvements that were previously identified. There's a lot of text in here, a lot of stuff we need to talk about, even in the last project that they provided, so. You can certainly go through the memo here. I kind of want to just go through some of the figures here, exhibits, and I can kind of just describe it because my description will match the text in front of it, so. What you're going to see in front of you is the project that's identified for potential improvements as part of the larger preliminary engineering report that was approved about a year ago. And at our last meeting, we discussed not pursuing the preliminary engineering report because that's more of a rural development item. And the water treatment plant is not currently being proposed for construction, so. This would be the remaining improvements. These are essentially the remaining areas of town that are, have little water main, four-inch water main smaller. Some of these are three or four houses on an inch and a half service, things like that, so. This would address the remaining water distribution needs for the city. And I'm just going to kind of describe some of these things. So we had two blocks of Eighth Avenue on the north side of town, which would be reconstructive new water main, new sanitary sewer, and drainage improvements. And then also another area around Allison's Park, generally just north and west of the park there, again, to replace the bad water main, and while you're at it, the sanitary sewer, just some drainage improvements, new streets. So that's the larger street utility type of improvement project, and also having additional improvements to the Maple Ridge area to have some additional looping brought up there because right now everything goes with the booster station pumps up there, and it only feeds into people's houses, so there's no circulation. And ideas are to kind of help alleviate that are going to be to add some some on looping into the system. If you wanted to pump up there, again, even if you have a booster station, so this might be like a back, backside to kind of alleviate and allow the water flow through, circulation more than actually getting water up there, without ideas being a second booster station or working out the current one, or having some sort of storage up there so you can pump water up there and have redundancy, so that, you know, water tower, some sort of short water tower probably, which would also help feed areas on the east side of, or sorry, south side of town if that was all air connected.
So if you, if you looped that area and you didn't have a station, would, would the pressure change, would it reduce?
So in order, yeah, the booster station's there to get it up to the top of the hill, so if you interconnect that with somewhere else, that's at lower pressure, the higher pressure's going to want to push down to the lower pressure, so. The idea here is that's going to kind of just help circulate.
But right now, it's a total system, so you know what the pressure's going to be up there. You pump so much pressure up, and that's how much is going to be there. You know, when it gets to the end of the system, it's going to reduce by whatever the difference is, whatever you figure out from beginning to end. Okay, so now we put a, we, we loop this, and we, but we don't put another reducing station here. So our, our, it's, it's just redundancy, you say, but is it, uh, will, just by doing that, will that, and will that lower the pressure up in that development?
The interconnection right here, I wouldn't propose adding a six-inch water main or something like that. It might be a pressure do some stations, some sort of smaller connection. I would have my, my water engineer probably propose something a little better than that, but that's, the general idea is that you wouldn't want to have your system up here at eighty PSI or whatever it is, and then having a hundred feet of head elevation difference between there and somewhere else. You're not going to pump up against it, so I think the best case scenario is that water's coming back around and back down. I don't think there's any way to get the water to go back up there. Would it reduce the pressure up there? That's what we have, we would probably have to finalize our model and see how that kind of ends up, but. I guess there's, I don't think it reduces the, reduces the pressure up top necessarily, but we wouldn't have a redundant way to get back up there if we're trying to get water to go back up there. It'd just be kind of a certain waiting system in that scenario.
So it really wouldn't, without a reducing station, it really wouldn't be a loop. It'd, it'd just be an outlet or something, then?
Yeah, it could.
Because you wouldn't, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be serving that area. I mean, you couldn't, if, if, if reducing station on the north end went down, you'd still, even if you had that loop, they wouldn't, they wouldn't have water up there that had any, that had any viable pressure.
Yeah, if you had other issues like, you know, previously many lost pressure, clearly this isn't going to backfeed some other way. If the booster station went down, you would have no water up there. So this is not a redundancy, it's just an additional looping for circulation. If you want a redundancy, my, my assumption is that there's probably not enough pressure in this lower part of the town to get up there. So I think another booster station, or having some sort of storage up there, where she'd pump it if you get higher in that scenario, would be an option to offset any time off, off the system, so you would have to have a constant feed through there, you'd have fed through the storage. But that wouldn't be, again, addressing the looping needs, that'd just be having another way to feed the area if there's some sort of an issue with the booster station or something like that, so. When I say feed the area, it's kind of storage, hold the water for a day or two if you had to do repair or some sort of work over there. And then there's also the option, I guess, if you added storage, that, the idea being that you're trying to feed this southern part of town off that water tower, that could be also something to be considered. But that'd be kind of a larger system-wide improvement, so. That wasn't really what we were kind of looking at here, but just trying to add circulation because I know it's kind of dead-end line, was the thought, here, and having that secondary feed to allow water to come up there and then back down, was the general idea we had in our proposal right now, or not proposal, but our proposed improvements.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I know I just talked about a lot of things there, so.
Right now, not at all.
I'm baffled too, because it's, it's a system that's got so much pressure in it, so it's static until there's a draw on it, and it's all the same water. I guess there's a method of allowing that to loop and go back down.
It's, it's the same general idea.
But it seems like if it goes back down again, and, and we don't have, we don't have a controlled pressure, pressure on the outlet end, and it gives us a lot of ants here, but then if we have, we have a breakdown in the, the pumping system that goes up there, we're still not feeding anything. I mean, it's just, the system on top of the hill is still, is basically down, I mean, just because we got a loop, the loop.
The loop wouldn't be able to feed. If that booster station goes down, you will not be able to get water up there. I mean, the water tower.
Unless there was a booster station.
Wherever that, wherever that line goes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess it'd be kind of identifying what is the purpose of that. Is it to have two ways to pump water up there for the redundancy, or is it just to have another way for water to kind of circulate, come back down, which isn't necessarily what would happen in all cases, but that's where the pressure-reducing valves and this kind of thing is kind of coming into play, where you can have a smaller amount of feed from the top side, so it's not going to be trying to push all the water through. You're not trying to feed the south side of town from the Maple Ridge neighborhood.
Right.
So that's where the pressure-reducing stations, those kind of things kind of come into play.
We just don't want the water dead-ended up there. That's our, that's our focus at this point.
Correct, yeah.
So a reducer could slow it down without, kind of, anything else worse?
Yeah, the P R V products I've been, they do the pressure-reducing stations, have had like a six-inch high pressure and like a two-inch low pressure, so it can allow it to feed to that two-inch line. Need to go larger, it can go to the six-inch. You wouldn't want to say have that six-inch, maybe there's some sort of intermediate fix, but this is just to kind of keep the circulation so you don't have a dead end. That's the purpose of what we're just kind of initially proposing, just a connection point, but if you want a redundant feed, you'd probably need booster station to get it up there.
And so, okay, and then so with that, you're saying it's a closed system with however many units are up there now. If for some reason, two years, ten years, fifteen years from now, a development occurred to that southwest, south end or west, you'd, you'd have to serve that with a, with a, with a different system anyway.
South and west of the Maple Ridge area?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, there might be some capacity here, maybe the booster station could handle the ability to feed a little more service area, but you get to a point where you don't have to make people serve by one line, and that's just kind of the danger you face there as you along with that age is more likely something's going to happen to you where you'd have to, if that line goes down, you'd be in a bit of trouble until you get fixed, I guess, so. If there was a desire to add capacity, I mentioned storage, and the reason for storage is that if you have a small break or something like that, you have water up there that may be drained out for a day or two while you make a repair on a water main, and that's where storage kind of comes into effect. You'd have to probably have some sort of a pumping link at the top of this, you know, same way you do well essentially from your current systems, but you'd have to have a way to pump it up to the top of the tower, because I don't think the pressure up there would get you terribly high, but this area being so high, maybe you don't need to have a tower that's one hundred and twenty feet tall, maybe it's a lot shorter than that, so. These full improvements, I'd really have to bring my water engineer into it to kind of give an idea of what you would exactly need, but we did do some initial water modeling of the system. We got some, some readings on it with the number of PRVs in town and potentially, I don't know if there's any closed valves or something like that, but they basically were having issues getting the model to, to work, because something, you know, they can go out there and get all these readings, try to get the model put together, and I think we need a little more field review on that, and a little more information of PRVs that we have before we do that, so. That's where I'd bring our water engineers into it, but initially, it's just trying to figure out what to loop it, which is a more simple type of improvement, but a storage or boosters kind of get into it, that kind of is a big change to the system.
All right.
So that's on the water side, and then pretty much everywhere in these maps here, we show water, sanitary sewer, clay pipe. You take care of the clay pipes at the same time, you have sanitary sewer sealed up. I do believe there are areas identified as newer water main, but older sanitary sewer that we have not included in this product area. There's probably a lot of those areas of town with sanitary sewers that are clay pipe going north and other, other older parts of town, so this is basically a water improvement project, as was initially, initially discussed. So if you, I think Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue, south, south Minnesota Street, I believe those both play pipes, play sanitary sewers. They're in the product area. If you wanted to add them, that would be the timing, but it's obviously not going to be for your, your water system. So all together in here, we did do cost estimates for these types of improvements based on construction prices in 2022, which were exceptionally high, no question, question about that, so. Total estimate about three and a half million dollars, construction cost four point four million dollars, project costs, project costs, improved contingency, and engineering costs, administrative costs, and legal costs. So comparing that to the project we did in 2020, which was about two point one million dollars construction, somewhere in that range, two million dollars, we saw a pretty significant increase in price between those projects between 2020 and 2022. There was a pretty big jump on these type of improvements, so hopefully those costs come back down, but I am not saying that until I see the first project come through that's less than their bid last year. So that's, that would be the cost for a street utility project, and we had previously discussed the water tower at about five and a half million dollars was the project cost that was estimated on that in November of 2021, so it's probably five and a half, six million dollars for the filter plant, which is not proposed in this, in this memo, but is the item that SEH is still putting out, trying to contact legislatures and more of trying to get federal earmarks, this kind of way to fund the project, so. You may recall, the city did not score very well on the project priority list for either water or wastewater, so the potential for state grants is relatively low. So I do have this short blurb on there for funding. These types of projects are difficult to fund unless you've got an outstanding need. There's no, there's no danger to health, there's no permit, there's no conditions that you are, your, your water treatment isn't violating anything. It's red water, but it's okay to drink in some areas when the rust hits it, but you don't, you don't score very well on those things, so the rural development wasn't going to require you to increase your water rates up to about eighty-some dollars per, per month, I think it was eighty-three. And so for pseudo-rural developments, PFA is another source out there, and that would be slightly less as far as what they require you to increase your water rates. They're one point four percent of medium household income. Rural Development's one point five percent of medium household income, so both would require you to increase your rates to use those funding sources, and they'd probably be loan-only anyways, so best it doesn't be a lower interest loan for thirty years. So I did discuss some of these things in August, some of these figures that they might have presented at that time, but this is kind of just summarizing everything that we've looked at so far as far as potential street utility projects in this memo. And I understand you're seeing today here, so if there's any questions for it, simply let me know, but again, it's just a summary of what we've worked on to this point.
Thank you.
Of course.
So we have to be for that kind of monitoring of our quality rates to build up?
Is it still to increase it to eighty dollars?
What was before? Well, it'd be less than that, I mean, depending on how much you want to use. Some of those bonds that are coming off, and depending if you want to, you know, replace some of this in, in there, I mean, I forget exactly what I said last time, but I think in 2024, a pretty big bond is, the water bond is coming off now, so. I don't, and we didn't have to do anything, what is, whatever you said, that was two point two million. We didn't have to do anything with rates. We were able to, with that sewer project, we were able to fund that with, with, with whatever we paid in to, for that, for our old treatment plant project, so. Interest rates have went up some, project costs doubled, so debt service probably sixty thousand a year with, with interest, so sixty thousand a year divided by four hundred and fifty users. How much is, how much is that per year per user? I got it?
Sixty thousand, what did you say, sixty thousand?
A year divided by four hundred and fifty units.
I used to do that in my head, but not anymore.
I, yeah, not today.
One hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, so.
So, yeah.
Hundred and fifty, hundred and fifty bucks a year divided by twelve, twelve dollars a month for, for that, for that project, you know, assuming you use some of that sewer money and you use some of the other, which is different than eighty dollars.
Because if I, many of the streets are shot.
Correct, so, yeah, if it, it would seem to me fifteen dollars a month, assuming we use some of the other money, doing whatever would get you there. If we use nothing, basically pay the whole thing on the rates, thirty dollars a month increase would, would get you five million dollars.
And I don't like, I don't wish you'd worry about that.
No, it seems like, it seems like a rational way to go forward.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's whatever, fine. You know, he doesn't, you know, nobody knows if it's going to be a five million dollar project, maybe four million, seven million could be.
The pricing, so, so the price, the price of resources is all.
But based on that, I think you legitimately could, you know, maybe it'll be less, but I think you legitimately could save for twenty to thirty bucks a month if you went ahead and pursued that project. You, at this point, you'd go in, go in with, you'd go in with that in mind, that that's what it would be, and if, and if you got down, or came in too much, you did whatever, would you just have to have something awful as well, awful what the proposal is?
I don't think you necessarily, even if you add, put a water storage up there, it doesn't necessarily have to be a tower. Yeah, and, and anything like that is outside that four point four million dollars, but, I mean, there, at the top of hills, there's some areas, some other type of storage techniques that are not necessarily a full-size pool.
You don't have a location on your, where that loop would go, right?
Uh, well, what, Restorance Boulevard does have a stub out currently, and perhaps that would just come down to Ninth Street is the kind of, the most.
Well, with the, with the overall, we've, we've got a, we've got a right of way at the back end. If you can, you can kind of see it there, or go back into that driveway, that's supposed to loop our east and west with Oldview Heights, going past the bus garage and.
Okay.
That's, there's, there's a right of way that's supposed to be coming down that hill.
You also do, okay, and you do have the area, South Ninth Street, which is outside the city limits now, if that ever was to be.
Right, yeah, right.
Added in, annexed into the city, that would be, expand as well.
Yeah, a loop that's going to happen, probably going to have to happen, we're, we're most likely going to have to come where you, where you end up at the, on the southeast end, the southwest end of Oldview Heights, where it cuts off at a grade school property now, where your blue line ends. That's going to, that's going to have to go to the west, and either go to Ninth Street and go all the way, go all the way up to, to Maple Ridge, or it's going to have to head back north and go by, and go by those properties that are in township.
And my understanding, talking to Randy previously, is it sounds like there are some pressure issues in that area of town as well, so perhaps that'd be of help.
Well, the pressure issues, no, the pressure issues are that, that height is regularly yellow and blue. There's, there's a reducing station there.
Yeah.
The reducing station has been, has been defunct for two years.
Okay.
So that, that's, that, this isn't going to have any effect on that.
No, that would be, yeah.
The reducing station, the one right up the top.
I don't know that one.
There's, there's, there's a reducing station right there.
I thought they fixed it. They didn't?
Apparently not.
Well, yeah.
Okay. Apparently there's some contractor, whatever, contractor that was going to do it has changed that with personnel from now, a different contractor is coming to do it.
Yes, I mean, what we've been looking at is kind of just a still pretty high view on some of these things, and I do think that, I just want to bring my water engineer in to talk about the system. I, I can talk about it pretty much down here, but the person that would need to, to come in here is going to check the cats and burgers, tell them what's modeling, these communities around here, and he's the person I really want to bring in and figure out exactly what you need, so. If it's something you do decide pursue, proceed with, he'd be my first phone call to make sure that, you know, street utility reconstruction, I think, is fairly straightforward. It's just the system improvements that probably need some additional modeling to figure out exactly what you need to do for what you're trying to do.
Well, I mean, okay, let's, let's say that they said, they say, go ahead, let's, let's move this along, get a contract put together, add, add those loops and whatever all in here yet. I mean, what kind of timeline are we looking at? What, what fits, what's, what's going to fit on your design schedule and your water modeling person and whatever?
Any additional field modeling, we just got to make sure there's no ice and snow on the ground, this kind of big thing, so if we had open pipelines, we don't cause more problems. As far as proceeding with anything, I mean, it's, as soon as anything gets surveyed, it'd be April, probably, before you want to even want to consider that, so.
So let's assume you get something surveyed in April, then three months to do plan inspections or longer?
Yeah, so what I would typically look at for a project like this, three months is kind of on the lower end of things. I would probably want to, you know, I've got to give you the memo here, if you want to do any kind of preliminary engineering for a report or something like that, we certainly can do that, but if you went straight into design, yeah, four months is probably about adequate, and then you're.
So September, so September, and then you could put plans together for a bid in late fall, early winter?
Late, late fall, yeah.
It's 2024 project then?
Yeah.
So city was going to do financing, would be 2024 financing probably?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's basically whatever schedule you want to. I'm, I'm bidding a project that I just got approved last night. It's going to be bidding on February twenty-fourth, very similar street utility type of project, so if you wanted to get something around that schedule, that's a pretty standard schedule for a street utility project, but you certainly could go earlier into, into the fall, and that's not an issue. Usually early, there's always a gamble there, because you bid too early, contractors are going to see what else is out there, maybe they don't always get your best price. So fall bidding on a smaller project, and this is, it's a smaller project, it's four and a half million dollars, it's still a smaller project for street utility work, that's still maybe on the early end of bid, October, November, but a December, January bid would certainly be early enough to get materials and not be too early.
I guess, like, I guess you'd never know when, when we bid the sanitary sewer project, it wasn't envisioned in timetable that, that the sewer main was all going to basically be in, that.
I never expected to get that project done as quickly as it happened.
Yeah, the, the initial inflation, so I guess you don't, you don't know, I guess it depends on how long, if you bid something out in October, which, which that one was an October bid, wasn't it?
We opened bids the first week of September.
September?
And we started work two or three weeks later after war. I mean, it was the fastest I've ever done anything on a project like that, so I would never bank on a project getting done on that kind of schedule.
No, but, but if the contractor wants to start it, thoroughly, I mean, you pretty much got to let it start it too, right?
Yes, I bid a project this year that, this last year, that September bid opening, we said, you can start now, well, you don't get done now, I get done, you do next year. But that was a trenchless improvement or drilling water main, and we were doing things like that, so. That contractor did three quarters of the work in the fall, and I can come back in April and finish the water main, and so, yes, you could allow to split it up. They're probably going to ask for material on hand, they're going to order it all at one time and things like that, but.
But I'm not saying you ask for anything, but in theory, if you, if you let it in September or October, which, which at this point, from what I gather, it sounds like it could be possible.
It's possible, yes.
That, that somebody might start this fall, or they might start next, next winter or next spring.
Yeah. Yeah, and as long as you're okay with the ground roads over winter, which is probably what you'd run into again, but as well as they could have last year, last time I thought, so.
Well, I guess that's kind of up to you with plan, what you want to do. Want to move forward and get a plan together, or do you want to wait for a while?
Plus, we'll have to remember, if it is a 2024 project, that's more than likely when County Road Six and Ninety-three will be getting work done as well.
Well.
Or at least six.
Kind of six.
At least six.
Well, I think we should move forward.
I think so too. The streets are getting bad. If you let me bring your proposals to the next meeting, you would assume the cost would be to, I'm going to bring a design proposal, I guess, at that point, you have a good idea what you're, what you're looking at. As far as your water rates go, lawn, you'll As far as your water rates go, long, you'll obviously look at that, but, um, even if you decided to wait, I would certainly recommend to get those things moving forward and increased. And, um, the the need's not going away, and it's better to do ten bucks a year than all of a sudden slap forty bucks on you. When you decide to do a water treatment plant or something like that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, you take that rate along there later, but you can you can do that in five five bucks.
Do you go ahead with that one year?
Not yet, nothing unofficial. I mean, you can you can go five at a time for a while.
But then if we're increasing this twelve dollars a month for this project, and then we're going to add on the water treatment one.
That's what I mean, you might you might want to go five dollars every year for a certain amount a year.
But we're not really doing the water.
No, but that's what you're talking about with increasing the bills.
Yeah, so the the water treatment, I mean, I always got to remember, these things are going to be probably twenty a year bond, thirty a year bond, whatever you decide to go with, so, um, you might be talking about five bucks a year, but it's only going to cover the first four years, you're still going to be, if you increase it five bucks a year for four years, you're going to be paying off that at that rate that you need to be in relatively short amount of time, so, um, small increments can look a little better than one big, that's for sure, and still get pretty close to where you need to be. And maybe so, and increase it twelve bucks, you can go thirteen bucks to make up for the first couple of years that are a little bit less maybe.
How long has the Minnesota's water rates increased?
It's in the back of the back of the company, two thousand and twelve maybe? Two thousand and ten.
I think we move forward.
I think we.
So you don't need a motion, then all you can do is tell them to bring something back?
Bring something back.
Yeah, it's bringing proposals next month.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we switch gears and talk about the levy?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so I have kind of three topics, I'll just kind of go through quickly. First, just overall project update. Um, second, there is an amendment, um, these two pages, I guess, um, asking you to consider. And thirdly, want to talk about project roles changing, so we'll just start there. Um, I'm at S H for two more weeks. Um, and, um, I hopefully though won't be completely disconnected from this project, so I'm going to MINDA in a flood resiliency role, and I specifically asked to maintain a connection to this project, um, and so would like to do that as much as possible, so answering questions or whatever, just to make sure that, um, there's no, I guess, rework or whatever, because something wasn't understood or whatever. Um, Luke is here, so he's here to introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Luke.
Um, and he's going to be taking the project manager role that I've been serving. The rest of the team stays the same, um, you haven't met anyone else, but there's a whole team working behind the scenes on the levy project, um, nothing else is changing there. Um, Luke, can you maybe speak a little bit about your involvement on the levy project already and the highway project?
Yep, so yeah, my name is Luke Johnson, I've been with S H for the last five years. Um, concerning specifically, um, the Trump Avenue Ninety-three project, um, I've been with that, the design lead, um, for the prelim project, uh, started, I think it's three and a half years ago now, um, and then I've been the project manager and design lead for the final design portion of it, and along with the Trump Avenue Ninety-three project that was constructed this last summer. Um, so a lot familiar with the MINDA portion, um, with the city portion of the levy, um, I've also been doing all the modeling and design for that as well, so I've been along the entire way, I guess you could say, so.
Yep.
I have to add that his name is Luke Johnson, and he comes from Wisconsin.
That's right. And I'm proud to do that.
Oh, bring that up. Um, but anyway, yeah, just want to make everyone aware of that change in the roles. Um, as far as the project overview goes, or an update, because I think it's been a few months since I've been to a conference meeting, um, we're moving along, um, there's been a lot of coordination with MINDA in recent months, and, um, uh, some decisions have been made by MINDA that impact our design, um, and so that's what the amendment is about. Um, so we consider it rework, um, we've already completed certain analyses and reports that now need to be redone because of changes, um, specifically the culvert on City Park Creek that crosses Ridge Road, that configuration has changed, MINDA wanted that to change, um, for reasons that I won't go into. And then, um, they also made a decision recently to increase the profile of Highway Ninety-three a bit more than it already is. Um, both of those things impact our design, the analysis, and also the actual plans. And so this amendment covers that work. Um, it also covers, um, work that Chris would be doing or leading, um, because there's watering that comes down Ridge Road that is going to have to be redesigned and reconstructed with the Ridge Road alignment changing. Um, so it's kind of hard to see, I guess, on this printout, but the total amendment amount is lower, right corner, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-one cents. The, um, expectation is that that comes from the state funding, um, budget that was approved for this project for the city in two thousand and twenty. Um, so I don't know, if there's any discussion on the amendment, um, first or questions?
Crystal, the state, as part of the funding for the whole Ninety-three project, the state allocated.
Is one point eight.
One point eight million dollars for that entry into Henderson.
Right.
So that's still in that.
Within that budget or within?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When you say increase the profile of Ninety-three, does that mean widen?
Not the height of it.
The height, okay.
Uh, over center line elevation, yeah, going up another nine inches.
Okay.
But, you know, that's to anticipate long-term consolidation of the roadway. They had they had a previous design where they were planning on putting a calms part in bankment, which wouldn't allow it, but there were issues with that proposal, and now they're going back and switching it on, so.
And it and I I guess I can promise this and not be able to, no, I that is not a promise, but we do expect the construction cost for the city's share of the work to be reduced overall, because what they did is they wanted more separation between the box culvert and the flood wall, and that leads to a less conservative design and a less, um, heavy-duty type of section of the sheet pile. Uh, and so we haven't run the numbers and updated the cost estimate, but we do expect the city's construction costs to be brought down, um, as a result of these changes, it's just that it, we have to go back through the and update everything to be confident in the change.
You have to prove it.
Yep.
So how are they changing the box culvert configuration? What's changing?
Oh, thank you, Luke.
I brought them, yeah, so everyone can't see this, but, um, so Ridge Road is being shifted approximately a hundred and, oh, jeez, I should know that, a hundred and thirty feet south?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I think it is a hundred and thirty-five, yep. Okay, anyway, Ridge Road is being shifted a hundred and thirty-five feet south, so the existing box culvert, there's an existing box culvert under Ridge Road, that's being shifted and turned, I guess, could, so.
Also go with the road.
Right, um, and then there is a another, I don't believe it's a box culvert, um, but about another crossing approximately seven hundred feet south of the existing levy, that one's being replaced, um, and you need to get the water, obviously, over to the riverside, so they're going to be putting in, um, a skewed box culvert, uh, to to help with that convenience.
It kind of goes back to the present design instead of cutting across.
Right, exactly. We were originally, well, originally when the project was taken out for prelim design, we're going to be utilizing one skewed box, and now we're having a cross under Ridge Road and then put in a skewed box essentially, so.
But it increases, like I said, it increases the separation or the distance between the the first box culvert crossing Ridge Road and the flood wall that will be.
That is a benefit, for sure.
It benefits you guys from a cost perspective.
And the flood wall is still on the west side?
Yep.
So we need to do, we need to approve an amendment?
Yeah, sure, maybe you can you can just authorize Keith to sign an amendment when MINDA sends it, I mean, what I'm doing is taking his proposal and sending it to Matt Young, and then, uh, Matt was pretty, I don't know what I would call today's response, um.
Easygoing.
Well, I guess so, yeah.
Yeah, so the formality, I guess, Crystal, kind of related to what we're talking about with the funding, the funding is actually coming through MINDA, um, and there's actually a contract in place between the city and MINDA, and then there's another contract in place between S H and the city, and it mimics the contract that's in place between the city and MINDA. And so we actually have to get an amendment processed twice, so first it needs to be processed between the city and MINDA, and then after that, we'll get the S H city contract amended.
Three indication, what all we do is send him an email, and he takes care of it, we'll see.
I mean, that is how you have been handling a few amendments for the other.
Yes. It's been pretty painless overall.
At our last meeting, someone mentioned that the the Ninety-three project was being pushed back because of bats that were going on and endangered.
No, the bats aren't pushing it back, but it's part of.
There's just a lot of complexity to the whole process. There's, uh, bad soils.
You could put Luke on the spot. I had a bat in my house, uh, last week.
That's that that that's that particular.
There is, there is a new law that goes into effect that, uh, puts another bat on the endangered species list or something that causes causes a little more notice, but that's, I don't think that's having.
But it's that's not delaying the project, mostly the soil, got it.
But Luke, Luke's the vote to make on that.
I'd be happy to, bats aren't delaying, no.
Okay.
There is, um, the environmental documentation specifically, it's a section seven with MINDA, um, it deals with endangered species, that is something we're looking into, is driving the schedule right now, um, but that's being processed. No, it it much more gets into the poor soil conditions and those sorts of things.
Okay.
And just the pure contract time that's needed, you know, the surcharging needs to, so you need to put with how much the road is raising, you need to put additional fill on top of it so it compresses the underlying soil, otherwise you're going to have a rope that sinks over time, so we're trying to get that sinkage out right away.
During construction.
During construction, that takes time, and so that's what's really driving, I guess, the construction timeline.
I'll send you, the Cibley County project, depending on how you view things, uh, they say ninety percent complete, but they're they're starting their four oh four review, which has some of the environmental documentation stuff that's in there that that Luke is referencing. I'll send you their document, and if you take the time to read over the fifty-some pages that are there, it it lays out what you what some of the environmental concerns are, and they're going to have this, they're going to have to do the same thing once they once they get to a certain level of 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 review and, you know, it could do, but their thing right now is the soil thing, but there are different mammals that got to deal with different historical aspects and things, different environmental aspects and things that, and and you can, when you follow that Cibley County thing, I mean, you can you can figure out where their issues are and, you know, whatever, and it'll it'll give you an idea of what kind of map you what kind of mapping system you're going to see, and it's going to be more complex on this project than the County Road Six project, and how much that details, how much of detail that'll contain, so.
And then that reminded me, I just want to give an update, I have talked about the four oh eight permit for the levy in the past, that's on hold until the design revisions that we're talking about here are completed, um, not the utility design, that's not critical for the four oh eight, but, um, the other revisions, and so hoping, I really wanted to get that out while I was still here, I don't think that's going to happen, um, but I would guess about a month from now, maybe it could be submitted.
It just depends on what you get notice to proceed or that, um, so that everyone's able to turn their attention to it.
Yes. And the timeline, I was given by the course, as long as we have something to them by March, um, should not impact the overall project schedule, um, and so we're ahead of that still, even with this latest delay. So, yes, looking for some kind of recommendation on this so that, um, we can get the ball rolling with the amendment with MINDA.
Well, Rachel brought it up, you'll hear lots of different acronyms, but with the core, the four oh four permit is a different type of permit, there's a there's a four oh four permit that's required for the MINDA project, but that's, S H isn't doing that, we're basically contracted with them to do the four oh eight permit for us, which specifically deals with a levy and those those kind of things, where where the four oh four thing is is the whole base, you'll say, the whole the whole weapons kind of stuff, you know,
So what we need to do?
Uh, motion to go ahead and submit.
I'll make a motion to go ahead.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure working on this, so Luke has to call me regularly to give me updates.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work on this, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we really appreciate it.
You've been a pleasure to work with.
You're welcome, thank you.
And hopefully Luke makes herself.
I I'll do my damnedest, I, she's a she's a tough act to follow, that's all I'll say. And I hope she strikes out at MINDA so she comes back.
Yeah, thanks.
I don't want to get a lot that far, so.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thanks for coming, guys. City Attorney.
I'm next.
You're next.
All right, good deal. Haven't been here a while. Just want to give you guys a little update of some things that are kind of coming down the line here, as you know, for better or for worse, the Democratic Party now has control of the House, the Senate, and governorship. One of the hot button issues, I guess, that they are really going to be pushing here over the course of the next year is legalization of marijuana. It's on its way, it's something to be on on guard about a little bit, um, it's probably going to, um, the Minnesota law is probably going to be something very similar to what the state of Michigan has, Illinois, maybe a blend of Colorado as well, but it's something that should be on your your radar and how you guys want to deal with it. I'm city attorney for ten other cities, and, you know, there are various thoughts on legalization, but there's no question this year it's likely going to happen. I I would put the percentage at about ninety percent. And so the key question you guys have to kind of be thinking about is how are you guys going to deal with this? And I'm going to be steering the majority of my cities to regulate this, basically like you do alcohol. The city would issue a license, you can cap the number of licenses, the number of places that sell the stuff, um, for instance, Janesville caps, there's a five, and then you can also put some regulations on it that can't be sold within five hundred feet of a school, or, um, you know, the product has to be behind 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 the counter, um, that sort of thing. But it's something to be on 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 guard of, it is on the way. Last year, the legislature kind of haphazardly, I should say, kind of did haphazardly pass, basically, uh, small amounts are now legal here in Minnesota, and I don't know if you guys have seen it in stores or seen it in restaurants and bars, but essentially, right now, you can buy, uh, very small amounts of marijuana, um, it typically comes in edible or drinkable form, it's supposed to have less than three percent THC in the product itself, and it's not supposed to have more than five milligrams. it's not supposed to have more than five milligrams. That legislation that allowed the small amounts also did give cities the power to say, no, you can't have that in your towns. Did you guys pass a moratorium here?
No.
Restricting that?
Nothing, nothing.
Just keep in mind that if it becomes a problem here in town, you certainly can. Um, of the 10 cities I represent, five have passed a moratorium, basically saying you can't sell this stuff in town. What some of my towns have been seeing, for instance, I'll just bring it up. Last weekend, Elysian had a situation where a 70, 75-year-old woman had ingested close to 15 of these gummies. And like they say, each one of those gummies had approximately five milligrams marijuana.
That's a buzz.
And, you know, the, the situation that she had is she, she ate three or four of them, nothing happened. She ate several more, nothing happened. She eats every more, nothing happened. She consumed the whole package over the course of less than an hour, and then all of a sudden it kicked in. And then, of course, she dialed 911 and needed emergency help. I don't know if you guys are seeing that in Henderson or not. If it does become a problem, you can pass that moratorium. Again, there are lots of different thoughts on whether it should be legal or not. I've got my personal thing, you know, of the cities that I represent, five of them have passed moratoriums where you can't sell it. If it gets to be a problem here, we can take a look at that moratorium. But otherwise, I'm probably gonna be steering you guys towards, um, treating it as, as an intoxicating substance just like you would with alcohol.
In the other, in the other states where, where it's become legal and, and you have, and you treat it like alcohol or whatever, and you get permits, do they charge fees for those permits?
Yes. And I would suggest keeping, you know, your license fee here the same that you would for either on or off sale.
Okay, so we've got an on-sale liquor fee of $2,000.
I would, I would suggest you keep it, I would, I would suggest keeping it just like alcohol. $2,000 license fee. It'd probably also be a good idea to put in the ordinance that we draft, once the state passes it, um, you know, a limitation on the number of licenses.
Does, do the, do the other states, uh, I guess now we do have Sunday sales and whatever here, but are there any sale restrictions in any other states as far as?
No. No, there really aren't.
Uh, what, what about opening and closing? I mean, here you got, uh, on sale or off sale liquor at certain times, like by 10 o'clock you gotta be closed or whatever?
It's possible that the state sets some sort of time parameters like they do with alcohol. Whether they'll do that or not, I doubt it.
So, so in theory, if there were some, one of those vendors in town, four in the morning, they could be operating if you didn't have your own?
We'll see, we'll see what the state does with it. Now, typically, what the state would, would do is they would allow you guys to set those hours if you wanted to. For instance, you could say no Sunday sales. You could also say no sales after 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM, or no sales before 8:00 AM or no sales before 10:00 AM. I mean, typically, the state will be flexible like that to give you some leeway, just like it is with alcohol.
Are they gonna have an age limit on purchasing, like you do for alcohol?
Yeah, yeah, more than likely. Yep, more than likely. So it's on its way. We'll see what the state does with it. Being that it's the state, I'm sure it's gonna be guarded. So it'll probably be us, up to us as the municipalities do, uh, to really regulate it. The big thing I think will be try to cap the number of establishments that sell it. Two or three in town. I don't think you want any more than five or anything like that. Do you guys cap the number of liquor licenses that you sell?
They're catified by the state.
By population? All right. I, I anticipate something like that.
If they, if the state mimics, that's what they would probably do then. They'd put it in certain class cities probably in certain ways.
More than likely, yeah, yeah. And then you, you as a municipality can always be a little more restrictive.
You can't go more, but you can go less.
Correct, correct, correct. So that's, that's, that's a, that's a huge topic that's coming. The other thing that is circulating in many of my cities, I had this.
Hold on, hold on, I'm thinking. Okay, yeah, so the reason you can charge whatever you can charge for liquor licenses is because you say you're doing it based on, you can't ever charge more than what you can, what you can.
In theory.
In theory, what, what you're, what you're selling. I mean, just off the bat, if it's, if it is $2,000 and you're really kind of pulling that number a little bit out of the air, but, but if, if marijuana does become illegal or whatever, or legal, you would initially, probably the rationale that you have to use the same or more enforcement procedures, uh, for that, that's, that's a good rationale.
Correct, yeah, correct. You're still gonna have your background check. You're still gonna have your administrative licenses. You're probably gonna have some law enforcement spot checks from time to time to see if they are following the age limitation. So yeah, I think as long as you keep that license fee, just like alcohol, I think you're just fine.
So yeah, there'll be, because yeah, you'll be enforcing, if it's gonna pass, they're gonna have to have some kind of age restrictions.
Correct.
Use, yeah.
And then how do you do for, like, breathalyzers for alcohol? What's gonna be the test for the marijuana?
That's, that, that is incredibly good question. Right now, there is none. And some of the other states that have legalized it, for instance, Colorado, I think Washington State, they do have a, um, a cutoff where you can't have a certain level in your bloodstream. The unfortunate thing for that is you can't pick that up in a, in a breathalyzer test or anything like that. That's gotta be a blood draw. So typically, if you have like a, a DWI that is drug-related, you know, you really almost have to have some unfortunate driving conduct where somebody is in a ditch, or there's an accident, or, you know, they're just completely blitzed out of their mind and they're not cognizant, they're not responsive, you know, it's, they're not making any sense. And then the law enforcement officer typically would apply for a search warrant, do a blood draw, and then that blood draw is gonna give you a number as to how much chemical is in the system and how high that chemical is. But it's.
But then are they gonna be setting a limit on what you can have to drive? Cause I don't wanna be out on the roads with somebody who's high.
I, 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 I hear exactly what you're saying, and I can tell you that it really is already a problem. Um, these, this, this stuff is out there already, and a lot of people may or may not realize it, but I mean, the Upper Peninsula of Michigan is only five, six hours away, and it's legal there. And they've got dispensaries all along the border, and it's, it's coming here. It's also coming in from Illinois. It's coming in from Colorado. Um, you know, it, it, it is a problem, and we're probably gonna be dealing with it for the next several years. But, um, it's, it's definitely not going to be as easy as enforcing alcohol, because with alcohol, you blow into a tube, it spits out a rating, you've, you've got a clearly defined limit. If you're above .08, you're getting hooked. With marijuana, it's completely different. You, you almost have, like I say, you almost have to have that driving conduct, and then you've gotta have the blood draw. And right now, there really is no limit. So it's, it's a whole new area that's gonna be a problem.
And then you got the issue of black market stuff.
Oh, right, because a lot of the black market stuff is laced with fentanyl, and you're, you're seeing issues there too. But Minnesota is going to legalize it. So it's, it's on its way.
Can I chip in? I lived in Colorado when it was first legal, and it really was not, I mean, yeah, there's obvious problems, but as far as normal driving on the road, it wasn't something you saw very often unless there were business. You know, if there was a big get-together or something, then it'd be a problem, and you just need to avoid it. But, you know, I mean, there might be a problem possibly during Saturday days or something of that nature, but, you know, we could restrict that in other manners. And I think that in Colorado, they mostly were doing the policing as sort of a common sense thing, that just like you'd stop somebody that's driving a little weird when they got a couple of breaks, um, you know, they could basically do a roadside sobriety kind of thing and then proceed from there.
The thing that I didn't think, think about, okay, say, when you're doing any of these drug kind of tests, I'm sure now, in order to prove somebody is, whatever you do, you have to do a blood test. So when you, when you do, okay, so we, a city can issue or ever can issue a breathalyzer. If you do a blood test and somebody analyzes it, when you take somebody to court, does, does the city always end up paying for doing those blood tests here?
No, no, typically, the, the blood draw obviously is taken at the hospital. Law enforcement takes it in evidence. They then send it up to the BCA lab, the crime lab up in St. Paul. And St., and that crime lab is funded by the state, and they process, I, I would be willing to bet that they process 75% of the evidence in greater Minnesota.
But typically, there'll have to be some sort of a traffic incident, because right now, you know, you can ask somebody to, you know, get out.
Correct.
Not by experience, I know this, but.
So, so overall, if there are more incidences, incidents that occur because of this, it's gonna be a larger cost to the state then for taking, analyzing these tests and coming back with themselves and doing whatever. So, so at some point, they're gonna, there's gonna be a way that the state, the state's gonna have to try to recruit, recoup these expenses for doing whatever.
Right.
Not additional enforcement, but additional processing of, of, of tests to do enforcement.
There's gonna be a lot of problems associated with this. Well, just the idea of edibles versus.
Does Colorado add an extra sales tax on this 2.06?
Yeah, that's, that's coming as well. Yeah, that's, that's definitely coming as well. So we'll see if it makes as much as they tell us it's gonna make. So for the next five years, I think there's gonna be a lot of hit and miss.
Well, don't Bachmann's and Gertmann's already have a monopoly on it?
Some, somebody probably does.
It's been years since they anticipated it, and they got the blessing.
But it's on its way, and the law enforcement's gonna have to deal with it. You guys are gonna have to choose to regulate it.
Well, those are old Chicharras movies and.
Yeah, no, the thing of it is, I mean, and I'm, I'm not trying to make light of it, but the stuff that is out there nowadays, cause I'm, I'm with the Leesville County Attorney's Office. I prosecute felony cases over there. And the stuff that is out there now, and even the stuff that is coming in from states where it's legal, it's not the ditch weed that our parents grew up with. I mean, this stuff, there is some potent stuff. And scientifically, they've been engineering and playing with this, these different types of marijuana. It, it, there is some strong stuff out there. And, you know, you're getting a lot of first responders and a lot of fire departments that are now dealing with issues associated with this stuff that they legalized last year, because people think it's legal, and well, it is legal, and somebody eats four or five of them in one setting, and they don't get any reactions. So then they eat four or five more, and then all of a sudden.
Kind of like laser damage, it just kinda.
Right, exactly, yeah. And, I mean.
I think key is when we're looking at, you know, if it's legal and people are applying for licenses to sell here in town, like, they need to be vetted.
Right, absolutely.
It needs to be classy, I mean classy. It needs to be like a very, I don't know. We should think about that in terms of if it's coming, it's gonna be here, then we need to be serious about vetting who gets to open these places in our community. And I think with the right people running the show, things are labeled, things are, you know, everything is, you know, tested and all that. I think, I think there are ways to have it not, you know, be this catastrophic thing.
Right.
We don't need to get all freaked out about it. It's just.
Need to be specific.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think you need to treat it just like you would alcohol. You know, you vet, you vet your licenses for alcohol, you run background checks, you limit the number of licenses. You have checks, you have age limits, you have hours of sales, and I think.
Cause it's already, it's already in the community. So whether it is legal or illegal, it's already in the community. So this is, this is not.
And we know it's on its way. They're already holding committee hearings and so it's.
In these, in these other states, when they have these places that do the sale, you mentioned the alcohol, are, are a lot of common places to where they'll do, no, they're, they're standalone so that it's not.
Yeah, they're just.
Standalone, like you give your ID, everything is tracked, they write, you know, like they have all your information. You go in there, you make a purchase, it's on record exactly what, you know.
Watch Tulsa King on, uh.
Yeah, I don't, I watch that. But, but I mean, would, would you be able, if, 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 if Roadhouse, one of the, they wouldn't be, would, would they, would they be able to get licensed for both things?
They could probably be licensed for what is legal right now. There are quite a few bars that are selling these beverages right now that have five milligrams or less and less than 3%. But I, I probably shouldn't choose my words carefully here, but the more potent stuff, that, that stuff will likely not be sold in bars. Those will be standalone dispensary shops.
Yeah, so maybe I should buy that one percent.
We don't have very many open businesses right now. It doesn't have a bathroom.
We can have that.
Yeah.
So, so it isn't like, do you not?
You're not gonna be able to buy the more potent stuff.
Yeah, you're not, you're not gonna go and get a port of whiskey and then, and 14 gummies and, uh, all right next to each other?
No, I, I, I don't think you're gonna see anything like that, but you probably will be able to go into the Roadhouse, maybe, I don't know, and, and, and buy the stuff right now, the less potent stuff that's in drinkable form. Cause there are bars out there right now that are selling stuff with less than 3%, and they're selling that right with, you know, beer and whiskey and.
So are there communities that are licensing that less potent stuff?
They're not, not yet. No, not yet. Now, there are, they are looking at doing that, and they will be doing that, but there are none that are doing it yet.
Like a 3-2.
Correct.
So they're just allowing it?
Correct, they're just allowing it.
Yeah, because I've, I've, I've seen a bunch of like tobacco shops and stuff.
Yes.
So, so what's, what's coming next in relation to that then, is another classification of license that's similar to, yeah, similar to a 3-2 or similar, or similar to, and, and then whether you, maybe you can buy a Cadillac license of on sale that includes all, all of these things.
Correct.
And then you may, then the city may end up having to enact another level of fee that, uh, you get, you get a, you get a standard liquor $2,000 license, or if you want this hybrid license that includes these lesser open whatever, that might be a $3,000 license or something.
Correct, correct, yes. So something to be thinking about. Everybody clear as mud on that? All right. The other thing that is, is coming up and, and causing some consternation in some of my other communities is open meeting law issues. Um, I think that you guys all are very familiar with the open meeting law. Anytime that you have three council members gathered in a place, you're discussing city business, that gets to be a real tough issue. I had it happen just a few days ago when one of the cities I'm city attorney for really watched the emails and the text messages. Even just something as similar as replying all on an email can really get you in an issue where you've got a forum and you're discussing any, any kind of business. Uh, the penalties for the open meeting law and violation of it are pretty severe for a city. A city can be personally sued. They can be responsible for the other person's attorney's fees, which get to be substantial in those kind of cases. And at some, in, in, in some situations, if there, if you have a council member who has violated it several times or allegedly violated it several times, they can be removed from office. So really watch the social media, Facebook. I'm as bad as that as anybody else. Really watch what you're posting on Facebook. If you've got several council members chiming in, that could be construed as a meeting. Watch the text messages. Watch, watch the email, watch the reply all. And all it takes is one upset person to really upset the apple cart. Um, you know, I, I had it happen twice in two cities, um, last year, a town not too far from here. Um, they weren't sued, but it came very close. And essentially came from posts on social media, and then it also came on, it also came from a reply all on an email. So really, really watch that. Um, does anybody have any questions about the open meeting law or anything like that?
And you're signed up, you're going to.
Your training.
Training.
You'll learn that new training.
To, to go through that, you're going to.
They'll give you a real good crash course on that, but the big thing is the text messaging and reply all and, and social media.
So my suggestion is if you have questions or things you wanna talk
So my suggestion is if you have questions or things you want to talk about, you go to Lon because Lon can send stuff to all of us without breaking the open meeting law, like if it's information.
Okay.
Like you'll see that here too as we, as, as one of the next things up is appointments of committees and whatever. Like Jason said, three is the majority. So our committees are two, you know, so you can have two. Yeah, to me, though they're open, now, nobody ever showed up, whatever. Those are open meetings. I mean, when you have an open meeting, like two city council people are, when you have, when you have what we're calling a committee, when you're having a meeting, anybody can come. Those aren't, those aren't private meetings or whatever. It's just a matter of you're in charge of discussing a specific topic or coming up with a recommendation or, you know, or doing whatever. You're not making decisions in that committee, but you're, you're going to come up and you're going to make a recommendation and, you know, that eventually either I or Tim will provide to pass on to the rest of the year.
The big thing is social media. You really got to, you really got to watch kind of what you, what you post on some of that stuff. The state is coming down harder and harder on cities for it. And you may not even realize, you know, as council members, when you post something about the city, that you may not even realize that somebody else, one of the other council members has made a post. But all it takes is that one arrogant hothead to go back and say, well, we've got three council members on this post, I'm turning it over to the state for investigation. Like I say, you may not even know it. That other post might be buried 40 posts deep. And, you know, you didn't intend on doing anything wrong. You know, you're exercising your First Amendment right to say what you want to say, but yet that hothead makes a big deal about it because you've got three people that have commented on it and it can become a big issue. And with social media, it's, it's, it's so easy to do, but it does put you as council members in a bad spot because violation of the open meeting law oftentimes is not covered by insurance. And so you as individual council members can be liable in some, in some situations. Now, if we ever had a situation like that happen here in Henderson, we'd fight like crazy to, to, to get the insurance coverage in place. But, I mean, I want to let you know that there is a possibility that there could be some personal liability there if the hothead gets a hold of it, makes an issue out of it. Again, it may never even happen in Henderson, it, it happened in two other cities last year. They were very innocuous, well-meaning, well-meaning posts. There wasn't anything derogatory or anything, but it did become an issue. And then earlier this year, just a few days ago, I had it happen in another city. So it's just something that I'm seeing, you guys kind of be on guard about it.
Well, then a follow-up to that, based on now what you said, and if you actually paid attention, I mean, Fire Commission last night, all three of you guys were there. Okay, so how can you do that? Well, the Fire Commission, we treat as a regular meeting. So how, how we work is that you guys get paid 50 bucks for every meeting. So tomorrow night's meeting, you're going to get, or last night's meeting, all three of you guys are going to get 50 bucks for that. That's basically, I post that, that's an open city council meeting to where, for everybody to go to. But like with other committees and whatever that you're going to get appointed to, those, you're going, you're not getting, those, those aren't like regular city council meetings. You're not getting, you're not getting paid 50 bucks per, per day. Mileage or whatever, you've got to go someplace and get paid for it.
They don't have the water.
Right, the water ones and whatever. Those basically are, they're open meetings, they're committee meetings, but they're not, they're not business meetings. I mean, so, so, but the Fire Commission, okay, that's a rotating group to where, this year's got three Henderson city people, one Henderson township person, one Jesslyn township person. But like anything else, you, you guys can all vote however you want to. Just because you're representing the city, there's no specific city tie-in that this is a group of city people that are doing all the same thing. You make your own decisions based on what you're doing. You might, you might vote with township people one way or the other. You might do whatever you're, you're doing. But that's, that's the only one that we've got right now. The rest, the rest of them, you're not making, so you can make, you can make decisions at that meeting. These other committees that you're on, they're not decision, they're all advisory, recommendation kind of, committee kind of, kind of people. And those, those are, those are the ones that, you know, as Amy said, if you've got something that comes out of those, you know, those two things, I mean, but make sure you brief Tim or I on, on what's, what's going on or Jason or whoever, on what happened at those, if you're, if you're moving on. Because I think what, you know, just, you just, you can't discuss topics as, as a group, we'll say. That's the reason for the, the three people. So if somebody brings something up to you, fine, they can individually bring that up to you and you can do whatever. But once you start sharing, now that has to be shared with, with, with everybody else. Because once it comes down to a vote and in the end, somebody asks you, you know, why did you vote or how did you know that? And you learn that somewhere outside of a meeting and somebody else didn't know that. That's, that's where, that's where, that's where you can get in trouble on, on, on the decision. Because basically one, one person, one of the electoral body people has got, has got personal knowledge of what's going on that they didn't, that they, that they did not share. But somehow they got what could be construed in an inappropriate way. And that's what, that's why, whenever you give that information, I mean, your best, if you give something like that and something's going to come up, the best saying, yeah, you might want to contact I or Tim, but really you want to come down to actually vote or do whatever, get a hold of the city attorney, lay out the facts, what the city attorney tell you, that yes, this is what I should do next, or this is what I should divulge and what I, what I shouldn't divulge. He may tell you, well, he could tell you a lot of different things. And one of them might be, you have to abstain from voting on this particular item based on what you know or what you do.
Just something to be on guard because people are getting more and more agitated. Difficult to deal with, so. It's something to watch, to watch for and be on guard. Because again, the worst thing that you want to have happen is somebody sue you personally and try to get some personal liability on you. I mean, none of us are making a ton of money here. Nobody's getting rich. I mean, it's, you don't want to be personally liable for some sort of open meeting law business. It's just, it's a minefield to really watch out for. So Joel King, that's a good segue.
Yeah, that's a move.
I don't know if you guys want to close this and discuss potential threat litigation or attorney-client privilege. I mean, you can close a meeting to discuss this. I sent Mr. King a letter demanding that he either pays back the money or get us back the statute. He has essentially said he's not doing either one. He's taking the position that if we want to sue him, we can sue him. We, from a legal standpoint, we have a major hurdle to, to overcome. And again, I don't know if we want to talk about this in an open meeting.
Let's just go for it.
You just want to go plow ahead?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. The, the major issue that we would have in this King case is he is taking the position that he didn't know what the stipulation was on the donation that you guys made. And the, you might recall that you guys allotted $3,000, donated to his cause $3,000 with the understanding that the Prince statue would remain here in Henderson for five years. Well, he didn't keep it here for five years. He's taking the position he didn't know about that term restriction. And we have no paperwork or no documentation that would show that he knew that, that restriction was in place. There was a meeting where it was discussed and voted on and.
Was Joel at that meeting?
There's no evidence that he was.
It was at the beginning.
It was, Paul was still here.
This was.
Nobody at the meeting, it was a COVID, it was a COVID meeting.
It was a COVID meeting, so it was online.
Right, Amy and Paul and Amy and one or two other people were here and.
And the mayor back then was Paul Menney. And I checked with Paul Menney and he, he doesn't recall anything regarding any of this. And he's the one that would have delivered the check to Mr. King. But we don't have any documentation that we can bring to a judge that would say that Joel King knew the terms and stipulations of the donation. Typically whenever, in, in my other cities, what I, what we have done is we've passed a resolution and that resolution has typically been signed off by the person receiving the money so that they know what the terms and restrictions are. That was not done in this case, so.
And there are no meeting minutes to say.
There's a meeting.
No, there's meeting minutes, there's meeting minutes.
That say who was present.
Yeah, but it was all, but they were present online on Zoom. Joel, and Joel was not indicated that he was online and present.
Okay.
So, I mean, we wouldn't have any idea if he was online. But he said, you know.
So proving that he knew what the terms and conditions were is going to be very problematic. That's one hurdle that we'd have to jump. The second hurdle that we'd have to jump, frankly, I wish we was in closed session, but the second hurdle that we'd have to jump is I, I have no idea whether we could actually collect the $3,000. Even if the judge says, okay, Henderson, you've run the tables, you win the case. I don't know if we'd be successful in getting the $3,000. I don't know if, if that three, I don't know if his entity still exists. I don't know if that entity has, has funds. You know, if this was $10,000 or $15,000, that's one thing. If it was $10,000 or $15,000, I would say we're going to sue this guy. But being that we're talking $3,000, I'm going to have time and material into this. You have to ask the question, you know, do you want me to chase $3,000 when it may not even exist? We know that the statue exists and we know where it's at. You know, so we, we also have that fundamental issue. Even if we win the case, how do we collect the money? Do we want the money? Do we want the statue? Getting the statue, I don't know if that's a good idea at all, to be quite frank with you.
So wasn't the, the funds for cameras for security and supposedly Joel said.
There was no dedication for anything.
I, I think it was just, as, as much as I can glean from the minutes, it was just a donation of $3,000 to this cause.
$3,000, it was during COVID, during the appropriation of $50,000 to different things. And at that, at that time, the appropriation of $50,000 was broken up into basically nonprofits.
Correct.
And generally, so the city took $25,000 and appropriated it to nonprofit businesses. The city took, the city in that appropriation took $25,000. $20,000 was with the fire district and, and went there. Another $3,000 went with Joel and another $2,000 went with a couple of businesses that, that were part of that $25,000. So there was no paperwork or anything, basically just checks were written out to those five vendors.
So this was COVID money?
Oh, yeah, it was always.
State COVID money?
Correct. It started out as COVID money. That's when, when it first came out, there was indication that we were going to get $50,000, was what the indication was. So, and the first couple of discussions on how to use it were, should it all be saved? And no, no it shouldn't. It needs to go to, it needs, it needs to get spread out in the community. And that's, that was, that was how that spread out was. I mean, and there were no, there were no, there was nothing that was. The fire department didn't sign anything for 40, for the $20,000. They got, the two businesses that we have loans to did not sign anything for the checks they got. And Joel King didn't sign, or Prince Foundation didn't sign anything for whatever. The checks, the mayor just wanted to distribute the checks.
So if we would do that again in the future where we gave money to stuff like that, we should pass a resolution?
Especially when you're dealing with an individual. If you're dealing with the fire department or the police department or the EDA, some other branch of government, I, I don't know as if you need to take those extra steps. But when you're dealing with an individual, I guess, you, you should, you should, you should have some documentation.
Was his nonprofit formed at that time? It was, okay.
Part, part of giving it to him was showing he had the nonprofit. That's, and that's all the information that was there. He couldn't get the check until he showed that he was a nonprofit. He provided, he provided the information for, for the nonprofit being in existence and that's what, and, and another part of the politics of that, of that time was whether it was going to be at that site, who owned the site, whether the, whether the owner of the site was even, was for it or against it. There were, coming into that day when Paul was doing whatever, as Jason indicated, there was, Joel was not really part of the whole discussion. The owner, the owner of the building, Amy, or the, Amy was the one that was representing and saying, yes, this is a community promotion, this is something that's going to. She, in my opinion, she's the one that convinced the majority to, to vote. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a majority vote, I mean, it wasn't a unanimous vote that, that, that went through. But the mayor, 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 Mayor Menney was for it. Councilmember Geldon was for it. Councilmember Wardman was for it. Councilmember Keith was for it. And councilmember Bowie was against it, passed, passed 4 to 1. And, but, but again, with not, no input at all from the Prince Foundation or the representatives, but all, but all the input from the owner, the owner of the business owner. And so that, that's, that's how, that was also the rationale that there were, there were already, we've, we've got loans to, to, this is all public information. We've got loans to Wigan. We've got, we've got loans to Colter. And basically those, those people were, were given money during, part of that COVID program as, as well. And in my estimation, this was more, it was because that's, because if you, if you follow the information at the time, the representatives in the Prince Foundation were saying, this is going away. And whatever, how long ago this was, four years ago, this was, this was, this statue, whether it would be made, it's not ever going to come to Henderson. It's going to go to New Orleans. And so it would really please from the business owner saying, bring this thing to Henderson because it's going to increase, we think, based on the mural that's there, based on the bench and whatever that's there, it's, it's a, it's a good thing, so.
At the time, I offered a critique of the action to the former mayor, expressed my doubts as to its wisdom. I think it was ill-conceived. It's an old saying about, well, it's not the statue, it's the individual that we're trying to hold responsible. And it ain't going to happen.
Well, he's not going to, he's not going to do the right thing.
Right, right.
I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but if you have not drafted, you should at least show money coming in and going out.
Yes.
Well, that's, that's how it's reported. I don't think, I don't think the documents are required to show when it's under a certain amount in the transaction.
Generally, no, if it's under $50,000, you know, but, but from a state standpoint, nonprofits are supposed to, whether you take in, if you're a 501(c)(3), 501(c)(3) nonprofit, you're supposed to report every year to, to the Attorney General's office with your. They have to give you some kind of a, whoever donated the money, they should be giving you a. Yeah, an example, you haven't got it yet, but, but yeah, baseball association, this year we got a dozen, you know, donors and, yeah, everybody, everybody will be, from that, everybody will be getting a letter saying, you donated this much or your service was worth this much and this is your.
Proof to the IRS.
Same, same thing. You haven't, you haven't, you haven't got it yet, but you, the $500, because, I mean, $500 to, he individually donated or to, to the fund, you know, so that's, that's another letter.
So what you're getting after, Steve, is that the city should have received a letter from that nonprofit for our donation, showing proof that we donated to them?
So that, that they're not following the state regulations?
That's probably true.
And that's probably true. Is it something we want to discuss, but it's probably. Is it something we want to discuss, but it's probably something that in one way or another should be pursued?
Yeah, no one pursues it, but.
Yeah, it would be the attorney general's office, because they regulate nonprofits.
Can the city send a letter to the attorney general's office recommending that? Or does the city not get involved in things?
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, does it, that.
Right.
Well, we can, we can explore some.
My problem is if we don't hold yourself accountable with the taxpayers' money at the lower government levels, then what do you expect from here?
Well, true. I mean, this was, this was a comedy of errors, and I told that to Mayor Minnie when it happened, that this would end badly. And, but yeah, I, I think we should pursue it on that, on that.
Something like that is appropriate or not appropriate for you to?
Well, the attorney general's office is supposed to exercise oversight of nonprofits, so, you know, there's some options there.
Yeah, because I, I think if, if, if we go to court, try to get the $3,000.
Yeah, doing it, doing it civilly, I don't see that doing it civilly is, is going to generate any positive result.
So let's do it unsilly.
If that, okay. I, I.
Oh, you go ahead.
Well, no, this, this, this will be a higher rated city council meeting, again. I mean, don't worry. This will, this will have, this will have a thousand watches.
No, I mean, bottom line is Joel has worn out money across Y.C., he has no money, that the nonprofit had no money left, that everything had been spent, and to the best of my knowledge, he was in the process of doing all the paperwork so that everything goes to.
Well, quite frankly, I don't think Joel's capable of doing the paperwork.
Well, Joel has not brought it, so. No, but I think we can still have that pursued and see what the outcome is.
I think we should.
All right. Good deal. I don't have anything else.
Okay.
It's enough to chew on for one night and a half.
Yes.
Thanks for. Anybody have anything for me?
No, I think we're all good. Drive carefully, get home before it snows.
Sounds good. You guys take care.
Thank you.
Me too.
You too?
And it's Jason?
Yes.
Do you have a card for any chance?
I gave my last one out moments ago.
Okay, no problem.
You guys stay here.
It's one a week.
Yeah.
Look at emails from him once in a while. That has stepped something.
All right, go ahead. Assistant city administration.
Resolution number 202301, resolution approving state administration's joint powers statements in the city of Henderson, on behalf of the city attorney and police departments. Looking for assets to show, adoption by council.
Insistence of tools available over the state's criminal justice state communications network for which the city is eligible, provides the city with the ability to add, modify, delete connectivity systems and tools over a five-year life of the agreement.
Jason, it's a law, it's a law agreement, or two different spots, right? Jason, look at the signed off on.
Okay. Do you need a motion to approve?
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried.
And I got the resolution number two, which is, which, well, I guess I maybe should, if you guys want to go for that sales tax thing again for the vendor park improvement, there, it needs to get out, get into all the various committees and whatever before January 31st. I think by the 25th, I've got to have the resolution and all those kinds of things submitted. What this is, is if this, if you pass this resolution, and it'll, there'll be hearings and whatever in front of the legislature this year, and if the legislature allows the city to move forward, and the city would hold a, a election sometime this summer or fall, and if that election passes, then it would allow for a sales tax to be implemented starting in 2024, and that sales tax would pay for about $250,000 in Allison's Park and Crown and whatever.
Depending on how many dispensaries we pass through, that could be a good thing.
And it still has to go to a referendum.
Correct. This is made, right, it's made.
So.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve that one as well?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the motion to proceed.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried.
I've got this report in there somewhere about, about, I guess, one, I think I got, he's got that one, right?
I got, I signed two, but, you got it?
Okay. What I mentioned was, I mentioned that the crystal, if somebody's interested, there is a comment period out on the Tony Road Six project, so if you are interested in looking at any of that, I can send you out some links on, on email.
Yep, I'd like that.
And, let's see, on, on my list here, I think both of them are returning or repeating. Just noted a little stuff, we did talk to Chase, he said he would come tonight, completed, but it seems like everything was, was going good enough. We'll have an update, there was a presentation at the last fire district, or the Fire Relief Association meeting for some additional funds for the fund, so if that's coming in, we'll have, that project will basically be paid for. We started audit last week, and then there's another one, the rest, there's another one, or the rest of it will start finishing up on Monday, and then there'll be some.
One to appoint me to this.
There'll still, there'll be some other projects that'll be coming up here shortly. Hopefully, we'll have a program or plan that I can submit in February or March, depending on how.
Chamber meetings I'm going to get to.
Okay.
Unless I run as an officer.
I just don't want to. Well, you want to be an officer.
Maybe, I don't know.
At least you do it.
I don't care.
But, where are the?
Fire district. Steve?
I forgot the kid's name, that is the, the original position. Last name.
Oh, that's Kyle.
Kyle.
Kyle Schultz.
Yeah, he took a little left spot, bad on the counter, he operates in, loses all checks.
One of them, they have to go off.
What's that?
Only, only one of them in the country.
They, but they don't know that.
Oh, they didn't talk about it at the meeting?
No, they didn't. And that's what, what's kind of.
So it's fine if one of them is president, but the other one probably should sign checks.
So we're going to have a chamber.
So I mean, next year, next year, one adjustment day.
Well, actually, this?
We only have a little adjustment.
So next year, next year's two, ten.
Oh, we have.
That's, right, that's just.
Yeah. Next year's two, and one lives goes off.
Okay, so next year, we only have two.
So kind, so there's, so there's not going to be two Henderson township on for, until , until 26. He was, Adam was supposed to be off last year. It's, it's rotating.
I don't know why he had that.
Well, Keith never showed up, and nobody.
Their lover is still counting, right?
Yeah, and there never was, there never was high people, so it didn't, nobody even thought about.
So we'll have to review that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I guess you could, I guess you could, anybody, it doesn't have to be an officer, I suppose, if you want somebody to sign checks, I mean, you can, you can assign whoever you want to do whatever, but it's just a matter of, he's not a member of the board, I mean, you know, but he can, he can, he can, he can sign checks, and he can tell them every meeting, and he can provide input, but only one Henderson township person is going to be voting, only one Henderson township person is going to be a voting member the next three years, because, there's always five votes, and so.
So Adam can sign the checks.
He can, he can do whatever, but he's never going to be able to vote on them. Or, or, either that or Schultz can, one of them won't be able to vote. I mean, if Schultz wants to be president and not vote, that's fine too.
I thought they had two this year, and Tuss, and that's just one, just.
Just, we got, we got three, they got one, and we've always got two, and then every, the odd years, or the, it goes two-year terms, so that's two-year with Henderson, two-year, last two-year with the city, and last two-year, last year, it was supposed to be our three. And then two with Justin, starting in 2024. So, yeah.
Otherwise, that was pretty short.
Yeah, it wasn't much.
And there's, there's a council member, still there.
And Randy wasn't there.
Randy's not a, Randy's there at the fire team.
Right, but he wasn't there to, to present. I was last time, but you don't list anybody.
Oh.
I had to to that one.
Where?
As liaison to.
But you can't be a member.
Right, I can't vote, but I.
You can't be a voting member, you didn't say anything, you can be there.
All right, where are we?
Library.
Library? They need two more library board members. I'm appointing myself to the library board, but they're short two representatives of the community, two people want to, want to drop off, so if you find anyone that wants to join the library board.
I can ask my wife, maybe she wants to do it again. I think she was on there one.
She was on there, yeah, because it was when I was on, she was just getting off. I think I took her spot.
I think so.
Ask her, yeah.
I would be on the library board, how often do they meet?
Can we?
Once a month.
Yeah, you can do it too.
Well, then you're on one of the boards.
Okay, great.
I guess they can do it.
Well, yeah.
So now, just, yeah, appoint a both, and Steve can get in trouble.
Yeah, yeah. Put that in the paper. Jolene Selner, library board.
Yeah. So is that Crystal for sure?
Yeah.
Crystal and Julie.
Min.
Okay.
And you got any other trails or others?
Uh, nothing really.
Okay, then you're ready for your appointments.
All right, the appointments. Do them all at once. Pat Stackman, Arlene Buskey, Judy Laav, Julie Dederman, Terry Bovey, Jeff Steinborn, Heritage Preservation, with Amy as liaison. Joseph R. Brown, Heritage Society, Alon Berberich, Economic Development and Housing Committee, that's the whole council. Chamber representative is going to be Amy. Parks, Trails, Tree Board, Randy Teagues, Mark Harte, Terry Bovey, Ron Walters, Jim Wardman, Jeff Ducharme, Steve Selner, appointments. Community Facilities, Amy Harte, Crystal Thomas, are the committee for the, for the council. Henderson Library Board will be Cindy, Jaclyn, Keith Swenson, Jerry Johnson, Jolene Selner, and Crystal Thomas. City Equipment will be Steve Selner, Randy Teagues. Mayor and City Council, Infrastructure, Transportation, Telecommunications, Flood Mitigation, Emergency Management, Civil Defense Director, the eternal Tom Phillips. Personnel Committee, Keith Swenson, Amy Harte, Acting Mayor, Amy Harte, Utility Bills, Randy Teagues, Crystal Thomas, Bills, Budget Audit, Amy Harte, Randy Teagues, Payroll overseeing is Steve Selner. Trails Task Force is Jeff Steinborn, Keith Swenson, Amy Harte, Martha Waverin, Danielle Biskins, Danny Graham, Terry Bovey, Troy Kester, David Rice, Doug Thomas.
I think too, what, should, we don't, we haven't had it on here, but this Amy is acting mayor, they're acting mayor in the past, signed checks.
It's not, it's not a problem now, because we switched brokers at work, and this new broker doesn't care.
Okay, okay, you're good. Otherwise, I was going to say.
Nope, it's not a problem. I can sign checks now, I think.
Otherwise, you can say that, that Crystal can, Crystal could be the check signer too, but, okay, that's good.
All right. So, approve those.
I do them all right, next page.
What's that?
Do them all right, right, next page.
Oh, sorry. Oh, no. The banks, Hometown and First State Banks are the official depositories, checking in our investment accounts to be established in both banks. City Attorney, Jason Moran, City Assessor, Civilly County Assessor, Vote Equalization Meeting, Randy Teagues and Amy Harte. Insurance, Community Insurance of Henderson, Henderson Independent as the official newspaper, Building Inspector, Jim Baumann, Well & Tower Contracts, Thinewell & Maguire Iron, Evolution manages website, social media, meeting setup and related matters, Don Bany, Construction and Chase Bany, Snow Removal, Nuisance Health Officers, Henderson Police Department, Mayor, Building Inspector, and Appropriate Personnel, many duties defined by statute, other information, franchise fees from, well, we don't have to.
Did you change the insurance, the Hometown Insurance about the name?
Oh, yeah, they changed their name.
Did they? All right, so we need a motion to.
All right, motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried.
Cash balances may be mixed up here at the end of the month, at the end of, at the end of the year, cash balance was $670,025, 14, or excuse me, 568,090, and the beginning, that rolled over to the beginning balance after tonight, balance is going to be about $169, $140,024,448,1, with the cash flow statement, we'll probably have about $170,000 by the first of February. We'll have to see where we're at, and if we're going to have to do any short-term borrowing for a couple of weeks after bond payments, but most likely not. And then there's bills and whatever all that are in here. Randy wasn't here today to do any of the finer stuff, but Amy was here earlier, and the collective, whatever was there.
Do you see a motorcycle you need to check for that? Where does that go?
It went, it went, it was top of the table, it went into 2022 business.
All right, bills?
I'll make the motion to approve the bills.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried.
And you should approve those cash balances or whatever.
Oh, I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion made and carried. The old business, and a new business, Aitlin Steinborn, Wedding Reception, and a cool. When is that?
June 10th.
June 10th?
And it's going to be at the department, if they don't have alcohol involved, then they don't come through here, but she's, her wedding, she's having her wedding there, and she's got her insurance, she'll have her own insurance to cover, cover the event.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
We don't charge a rental fee?
Then, I mean, change my, you know, we, we don't because we don't own this.
Oh, okay.
All right, if they use the.
All right, if they use the kitchen and whatever, that's the chamber that, that's our, if you're going.
So this is just basically where.
Okay.
We're allowing alcohol.
Gotcha.
All right, I made it a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion made and carried. Revised meeting schedule?
I'm just waiting. I got this, uh, part.
Oh.
Uh, you can do, you can do this next.
The tree grant here that, I don't know if you can work with me on this, or the, oh, yeah, yeah.
Did you get an offer? They got a question.
There is all, there is money available to apply for, for replacement of the, uh, ash trees that may or may not be infected with the ash board.
So these trees would go down at the park or along?
Well, it happens, it happens to be the ash trees.
Okay.
And then, uh, we need to take a, uh.
Survey.
A survey. I don't know why I should ask Matt Doris, I should just do it. Not just the trees or should I see if he wants to? Didn't we have kind of a?
We do, there was some results from a previous one, but it was like 10 years ago. That is, uh, but you can ask for, um, there's like an AmeriCorps grant survey available, that you can actually allocate a grant specifically to have somebody come in and do a survey of all the trees on town because this.
See, this has to actually be kind of done before this.
Right.
When it's something, I believe it's February 27th.
But I think you can go off of the one that you currently have. If you don't have that, I can, I can have it somewhere.
This is different than the one you applied for the last year.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I think we have a tree survey.
Great.
Or something.
The maximum amount is 50,000 per city. Uh, Matt Doris said we probably shouldn't. Keep it around either that 38, 40,000, try to apply for that. First, we need to get a count to see exactly what we got. On average, you're anywhere from 7 to 50, 950 a tree. That's removal of the tree, grinding the stump and the cost of the new tree and what is the deed.
25% match to me.
Right.
Could it, could you read it now? The 25% cash match or, or is it, is it a red thing?
There's a.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, income or cash. Okay.
And if we have infected trees, I think there's some sort of mitigation policy here to pay for some chemical or something as well.
That could be.
As part of the removal and replacement.
Do we know if we have infected trees?
But I don't think we have any, any legislation yet, so.
Well, right now it's over and the silver belt hasn't.
Right.
It's on.
It's not, no, no.
But I think we need to just go ahead and if we don't apply for it, we're not going to.
Mm-hmm.
Get it.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion made and carried. All right. Do we have revised meeting schedule?
Yep, but you also, do you want to do anything with rates?
Water rates?
This is, do you rate, this is, oh, a couple of things. Um, if you like, you're going to change city council's salary, you have to do those tonight. And they go into, if they do change them, they go into effect.
Two years, isn't it?
Right, after the next election. You know, so, and it is, one, you need to say yes or no, if you're going to do that. And then if you're going to, you know, if you don't have to do anything, would be great, but if you're going to do anything, you can do it anytime too. If you're going to do it effective January 1st, which is going to be your last time to do it, effective January 1st, I mean, because January is going to be the 1st of February.
You already told everybody you were going to raise the $15 a month starting this year, so anything that you want to raise in less than that, nobody's going to give you the price.
This year? Well.
Well.
Well, how do we?
I mean, are we going to do that $12 for the bond for that street project? And then if we did 15 for this, would people have a problem? Or do we, $10 increase with the 12?
What's the 12?
That was if we, for that street project, we talked about adding $12 on to everybody's bill to start funding this bond.
Right.
You can do it, I mean, it's, it's kind of wide open to what, what, what you want to do. I mean, uh, right now you haven't, you know, you talked about it for a couple of years. I mean, but you, you can set, just like you did that assessment or that building permit thing, I mean, you can set something up years in advance if you want. I mean, if you want, if you want to do five or six or 10 or 12 or whatever over a five-year period. You know, like, like Chris said, if you do $5 a year for four years, I mean, that, that's $20 that gets you a little bit closer to whatever number you think you're going to come up with.
Well, we're talking about 2024 project.
Correct.
Right. What was the $15?
Was supposed to be per month. That was towards the water treatment.
Towards water.
Early on, when, when the filtration system, filtration system was going to be a goal, it was going to, the goal is going to have to be to get to $80. And that was probably going to have to be then 15, 15, 15, 15, you know, for four years until I study that. But now the, since then, that filtration thing has kind of gone away. I mean, because there's, there's still money left. That contract was like an $80,000 SEH contract for multiple years. And I think they only, so far they've probably drawn 12,000 off of that and they won't be drawing anything more off of that until you actually take that project and go with it again. And so, because what, now if Chris comes back and you guys improve something, this will be a totally new project that you guys haven't had a contract for.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, but, but at this point, there's no mechanism to pay for it.
Right. So what pays for it? $15?
Overall, probably 20 over a certain amount of time, you know? You know, if you start at 24, it's going to be, not going to be done until 25. The first bond payment is going to be 25. You need to finance 24, they capitalized into 24 and then, uh, 25.
So if we did, if we did 10% this year, 10% next year, we're there.
Yeah.
$10.
$10, yeah, I was going to say 10.
Yeah.
Percent.
Yeah.
And then, never say the water filtration plant is dead.
Right.
Did I say that?
Yeah.
No, it's, it's just moved out.
Yes, yes.
And for four years, that's not a challenge.
So we can get some money. For some money. But I, I don't know, I'm fine with raising it $10 and just.
I'm fine with $10.
I think so.
Yeah.
All right, I'll still move.
Two $10, you can do it both. It's.
Yeah, do it.
$10 in 2023.
And $10.
And $10 in 2024.
Yes.
And then it can be reevaluated.
Yeah.
There's some magic.
He said, here might have been.
The system that happens that.
I'll second. Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion made and carried. Okay, now revised meeting schedule.
I could really, uh, no, no other meetings other than city council thing.
That's better. What does that date?
Next one, February 15th, early if we can get.
Why?
Don't get any more for that.
Motion to approve the meeting schedule?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is motion made and carried. Meetings adjourned.
And we did not, so we don't, we're not changing city council.
Oh, good.
We didn't talk about it, so.
What's that?
City council rates?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we want to go back? We're not adjourned. All right. Do we want to raise the city council?
You get 50, you get $50 a meeting and then you get 100, you get, everybody gets $100 a month, except the mayor gets $200 a month. And then you get, uh, city council gets $500 a year on a quarterly basis. And the mayor gets, uh, $600 a year on a quarterly basis.
Okay, so $100 a month, $50 per meeting.
Yep, and then there's a quarter, an annual stipend of, uh.
Additional.
Uh, $2,000 for, for, no, what did I say? 100, $500, $400 for city council and, uh, $500 for mayor.
And that happens four times a year.
Right, you, you paid that out in, so $100.
Just the $50, the meeting, the city council meeting starts.
City council and fire division.
What do you think, guys?
I mean, I'm fine with it. I have no idea what other councils get paid, so have nothing to base it off of.
Yeah, I think this one came from when it got raised for the first year Jan was on. I think she did a survey or did whatever all around, because that was what this is now, what, what was then was about average. So that's, so that's about four years ago.
I'm just here for the government.
There's one.
I'm not here for the money, so.
We do on Wednesday nights.
You get paid for you. I'm like, I have no idea.
Right.
Costs two bucks to get on the ballot. That's really all I know. I didn't book it any further.
So it sounds like we're all fine leaving it?
Yeah.
I get a free T-shirt. I get to be in a parade.
Yeah.
But leave it as is.
All, first, all second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Give her some.